Section seventy-two-one A, here in the Sibukasana District Province, here in the NCOP.
And as this committee is a joint committee of the two Houses of Parliament.
My committee here, the National Council of Provinces, is a national council of provinces, the Sibukasana NA, National Assembly.
And therefore, we are operating under the rules, under the joint rules of Parliament.
My section seventy-two-one, I'm going to say it again, I'm going to say it again, here in the Parliament.
And therefore, the order that, the order of proceedings for today is informed and inspired and guided by the joint rules of Parliament, as this is a committee and a parliamentary meeting through this committee.
My section seventy-two-one, I'm going to say it again, here in the NCOP, here in the National Assembly, let's say it again, here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
And the general rules and standards of a professional meeting.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
So, there are things that will be out of order if they are done.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
This being a parliamentary process, a speaker is allocated time to speak.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
And you stick to the time that you are told is your time, which will be, in this instance, three minutes.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
You are in blocks of four, as you are seated, and five per block will be identified, and then that will make up twenty, and the twenty will be given numbers and be requested to take the twenty seats here to line up for speaking.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Now, the key thing for today is the subject matter.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
The motion was resoluted in Parliament and conquered by, resoluted by the NA and conquered by the National Council of Provinces.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Which sought to make a proposition for a possible amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution to allow expropriation of land without compensation.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Now, as you know, it's a public record that your political parties, others agree, others disagree.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
And you, as civil, as civil society members, also agree and disagree.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
So today, those views will also play out. There will be those of you who agree and those of you who disagree.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
So all those who would want to speak are addressing the committee and not your enemies, your friends, your family, and your whoever. So you talk to the committee and we will apply the process and proceeding and the, and order in terms of you talking to a parliamentary committee.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Please refrain from interacting, disturbing the speaker on the podium.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
This proceeding will conclude its business at four o'clock this afternoon.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
I would like my colleagues to introduce themselves, starting from the left to the right.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Good morning, Maluweli, no one can change. My name is Sami Kwebi, a permanent delegate to the NCOP, representing the Western Cape. I'm also the chairperson of petitions and executive undertaking. I'm a member of this committee. Thank you.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Khwemoora, dumela. My name is Steve Swart, my name is Steve Swart. I represent the African Christian Democratic Party in the National Assembly. I'm a member of this committee and I'm praying for a peaceful outcome today and I say, as I've said in Parliament, Malabongwe, the government of Osi, amen.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Dumelamba. Hala, hala ba, hala, hala. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the local committee, I'm a member of the Constitutional Review Committee. I represent a glorious movement, the African National Congress.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Dumelamba, Shabangu, Maluweli. I come from Bambama, the Eastern Cape province. I am a member of this committee and I represent the Democratic Alliance.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Dumelamba. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Samubunani, come along, we're going to talk about the parliament, we're going to talk about the national freedom party.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
I come from EFF, the parliament, the president secretary of EFF.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Come along. My name is Floyd Shabambu, I represent the organization which made us together here today to discuss the land question, the Economic Freedom Fighters. I'm a member of parliament and is chief whip. Thank you very much.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Maluweli, I'm from Sefilthani, the Eastern Cape, a member of the committee, a part of the United Democratic Movement, the deputy chairperson of that movement. Thank you.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Dumelamba, Khwemoora, good morning. I'm representing the Congress of the People in defense of our Constitution as a member of this committee. And I also have to add, I'm home-bred and raised here in the goldfields. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Mzamobotelezi, a member of this committee, I represent the Gata Freedom Party. Thank you.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Maluweli, good morning, Khwemoora, Samubunani, Malundaha. My name is Usumzi Makuebu, I'm the member of parliament in the National Council of Provinces and I'm proudly representing the Democratic Alliance.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. The deputy chair of the EFF in the province, a member of the committee, a permanent member of the NCOP, Tata EFF, Tata!
Honorable Shabangu is the member of the National Council of Provinces. He hails from the same province and he is the deputy chairperson of the EFF in the province.
No, honorable Shabangu is out of, there's no Tata for today. All right, thank you, honorable members, and we want to give regards to any leadership that is present here. You know your leadership in the locality here and where you're from. We just want to greet you and, 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 and recognize that we know that you are in our midst. All right. Yeah, and also, we know that there are traditional leaders and I've already put my head down, you know, as an African for them. So we are all greeted and, as I said, I want to, 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 to emphasize the point. This is a parliamentary proceeding, so we expect the proceedings to be respected. We refrain and we must be fair and we must be help to make justice prevail so that everyone agreeing and disagreeing make his, or her view. So please, please, members of the public, we will have our times to politicize your, your, your leadership here in the table representing your views. So please summarize so that we take as many people as possible until four o'clock. So please cooperate and make sure we know your, your political party views are already on, on record. Whatever they tell you to do, radical or soft or no or yes, we all know all of that. As, as much as you know that yourselves, from your conferences, from all your rallies and everywhere. So please make sure when you are here, be relevant. Say whether you agree or disagree with the proposed or possible amendment of section twenty-five and the principle of expropriation of land without compensation. Interpreter?
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. 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 Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Thank you, we now identifying in your four blocks, five people to come and take up the seats. I have directed the interpreters to summarize what, after every speaker has spoken. All right, so please be orderly, speak as far, as, as, within the specific timeframe. If we ask you to stop, stop.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Section one, section one. Yes. From front to back.
Okay.
Do you think what is not broken? Uh, the first speaker?
Thank you very much, the chairperson and the honorable members of the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa. My name is Tsepile Simpe, I'm a local person from here in Welkom. Let me start by saying, I support the amendment of section twenty-five, which is expropriation of land without compensation. But I'll add, say with some reservations. Number one, chairperson through you, I think we are done with three minutes. This is a very sensitive issue, but I'll try my level best to be within your time. What worries me is, the, the whole issue has tended to take a racial lines and is polarizing the society. It's a very sensitive issue because when you listen to the commentary on the radio and read newspapers, it has divided us between black and white people. White people are saying they appear not to be supporting and black people appear to be supporting. And there's a history behind this thing. I invited a friend of mine, chairperson, yesterday, who is an African, and for coffee in the morning, yesterday at Markenbe, Vikas. He was complaining that they're going to lose what they bought, you know, their forefathers bought the land and whatnot. And this is what I said to Vikas. I said, when an estate agent sells the house, he gets a commission. And when he walks into that house, there are elements within the house that he points out. He says, "Look at the garden, look at this, look at this." There's Ndemukwena, there's Ndemutawu, there's Ubabumkutula, who worked in the farms in this country for five generations. They, they worked in the farm when the farm belongs to Mr. Kukemur, his great-grandfather. When the farm was sold, what they would do, they would call these farm workers as a value, as adding value to the farm. He would say, "I'm selling this farm for two million." And I'm in this farm, I've got this gentleman here, who happened to be a black person, who has been working on this farm for thirty years. He knows everything about this farm. He can tell you about the soil, he can tell you about what happens in the season. He knows this farm in and out. To me, what does that says to me? It says, "This old man, he's a value to this farm. He adds value to this farm." And I asked Vikas one simple question. Vikas, show me any white farm worker in this country. Because what white farmers are in this country are project managers, which we must appreciate. I cannot downplay their role in farming, but most of them are like managers, are project managers. The people that works these farms are our people. And they must appreciate what this government is doing.
The term is expired. Next speaker, next speaker, next speaker. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Interpreter?
I stand here to indicate that I support amending section twenty-five, which states, and land expropriation without compensation. I'd like to indicate that when the English colonizers came to this country, they did not have any land and there are no records indicating that there were land purchasers. Even King Mukotedi, Liziya III, can indicate, he knows where Free State starts and where the Free State ends. The Europeans came here with three ships, they did not have land in their name. Therefore, we want this land and the land does not even belong to the traditional leaders. No traditional leader has the right to claim land which belongs to their people. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Dumelamba, here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Community activist, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Expropriation without compensation. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. 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 They're willing buyer, willing seller, high receive a lead. Simply because the few minority who are in possession of the land now got greedy. When the state wanted to negotiate with them, they could not offer reasonable prices. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. It's very ambiguous. We want an unambiguous constitution that will be, that will say that the land must be expropriated without compensation. It may be, how can it be? Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP. Here in the NCOP, here in the NCOP.
Next speaker. Next speaker.
Uh, thank you, thank you, what a nice service. Amanda!
Amanda! Eh, nani bisolaka ki mkuuwa ne Balui? Ki wa hona mona, eh, Velcometabu, ki Sekretario Sixty. Eh, Lilla ki duwelela nantuna ya waro fazi, alu uchalelo wemalona, njeri sabish. Eh, Renaloma tata rufmala di ufo ba the settlement. Le walewa twa rona, eh, moru duanteni irenta rona, habana di liba kasa o xala. Waswa ba yena di kolu. Yale, unkagi na, ya ore wa eh, batwosere di plasi, zefifni. Marekaga tola di plasi zewu, wosewe zasepe di feela, woswanga di plasi zewu. Obanalefazi le gregia feela. So, nare kire ko po, ki aore di maspa la zetin. Hayve di reki so di plasi zewu, ha di rekuva di tene into the locations, kialibu.
Interpreter?
My name is Mukuanne Balui from Tabom Velcom.
Order, order.
My name is Mukuanne Balui from Tabom Velcom. I support land expropriation without compensation. We have informal settlements here because people do not have the land. And you also find out there, there is someone who has like fifteen farms and only two of those fifteen farms are active. Therefore, I suggest that perhaps the rest of the farms should be tent in land which can be used for providing people with houses, thank you.
Next speaker.
Thank you very much. My name is Gosinjani Spearman. I'm standing here. Ki todholo onagomi ti. I was thinking you are going to come and say you give us the land. But let me tell you, we want expropriation of land without compensation. We want land for the people of Machabing, the people of Lishulipu, the people of the Free State. We are not against the white people. But we want the land must be given to the black people. The dignity of the black people will not be complete till the land comes back. Kamanzu ari kupahu chinjuwe, section twenty, section twenty-five of the constitution. Uh, honu ufo ba batu baba tu, mobu without compensation. Nda dakota obuaga mona, obuwa ni ti. Mobuwa su tu ba freistata, unguru. Batu yoso ri kupahuri, mobu uchutsete, batumbaba tu. Ri kupahuri, batu baba tu, ba fuma ne, mobuwa di farmer, mobuwa residential area. Machabana ba honu uhu ra mo, ba dona ahama tu abona. Ri kupahuri, hape, ni private sector, ni fane kamo, hubatu baba tu. Batu ele, unga mayne na mobuwa mona freistata, batige goudi, masa fani kamo, bu ri kupama bu, uchulele sichabe.
Order, members of the public, please be ordered.
Agitla delanda de giru huluuna. Ki mbela ba ai kaufela ba machabing. Ri kupani kutaki sector ba ya uchutseta mobu sichabe. Ni koli ngela mobu, gru la kala machabing, kialibu.
Interpreter, order, interpreter.
Dade, Gosini Spearman, ure na utes ankena ya. Gosini Spearman from Velcom supports the amendment of the, of section five.
Please, quiet.
Section twenty-five must be amended to restore the dignity of the majority of black people. Says all land must be expropriated from the private sector. Land to mining land must be expropriated. And he indicated that all of this must be expedited. Because if not, people will take this land by force.
Next speaker.
Chairperson, I'm Kornegro Yip from Afriforum. We oppose the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution. We are against the expiration of land without.
This is a parliamentary process. A member of the public is allowed to say his views. Please, we want to hear, he's talking to us.
We are against the expiration of land without compensation. This amendment is not only about agricultural land, but includes all property in South Africa. Any removal of property without compensation is a very serious intervention in the rights of an individual. Property law is a fundamental human right, recognized by most international human rights conventions. Article thirty-nine of the constitution stipulates that courts should promote the values of an open democratic society in the interpretation of the Charter of Rights. And courts must also take into account international law. International law is contained in international conventions of human rights. In most modern jurisdictions, landowners have the constitutional right to compensation. Exploration without compensation is an attempt by government to hide their failures. Look at poor service delivery in all the municipalities. Is this why they're doing this? Property rights is a prerequisite for economic growth and intervention security. Exploration without compensation has the potential to destroy the economy. Look at countries like Zimbabwe and Venezuela. Chairperson, why do you think people of Zimbabwe wants to live in South Africa? A recent study done in March twenty eighteen by Burget Geldenay show government owes forty-two point seven percent of South Africa. The best thing government can do is to give this land title deeds to the people living already on state land. If government proceed with expiration of out compensation, they commit the crime against the people of South Africa. Governments' real objective is not to divide property among the poor, but to own the property themselves. If property do not have any value, how will you be able to cede your property as to the bank to borrow money, to start a business? Nor will municipalities be able to earn income on rates and taxes because property will be worthless. How will municipalities function without money if they can't even do now when they receive revenue? We consider the process of the CRC meetings as disorganized exclusively and unfair, especially because it excludes the working people and those owners of private property. Therefore, we have written input that we would like to submit to the committee.
Are you, you done, sir? Thank you, your, in fact, your, your minutes have elapsed. Can we have the next speaker?
Can I start?
Yes, sir.
Huya mora. My name is Viki Morris. I just want to correct something quickly. Di maneira de afriforum, this is not a service delivery meeting. This is a meeting whereby we are going to discuss the issue of land. We want our land back. So don't come off your tendencies of service delivery. Thank you very much.
Address the committee.
Thank you very much. As on land reform, is a government's current willing buyer, willing seller, render, land distribution policy. There is therefore nothing in the constitution that requires the state to stick to a willing buyer, willing seller, land distribution policy. That was my opening remark. We are not going to massage egos here. It has been for quite a long time. There has been a peaceful, very, very peaceful transition of political power in nineteen ninety-four. We are going to the twenty nineteen elections next year. While we will be in the elections, let us transfer the land to all the people that lives in South Africa. It cannot be correct that the whites are owing all the land and we as blacks doesn't owe land. It's very nice for them to see our black people toy-toying, protesting every day in the entire country because of the issue of land. Let us amend section twenty-five of the constitution with immediate effect. In conclusion, Comrade Floyd.
Put land reform based on orderly, economically viable, just, equitable and sustainable principles. Commercial farmers in the free state can and will, within their means, build on a new future for agriculture wherein all South Africans can and must share in. Free state agriculture distance, distances itself from emotive political rhetoric that initiates that farmers stole land and rejects such attempts aimed at driving a wedge between population groups. And we concentrate, we do concentrate very hard in the free state to work towards mutual trust in the free state, especially between our workers and the farmers and our Protestants on farms. We also connect with stakeholders and participate in dialogue to build this future together. We support the productive development and responsible management of agricultural land by new and emerging farmers. We are convinced that amending section twenty-five of the constitution will not achieve land reform to any faster, any faster as section twenty-five. It, it, it's not the real impediment. Finally, expropriation without compensation will be economic suicide for our proud nation we have all worked hard to build. And then there's one last thing I want to add here. If you do have ownership, you've got dignity. If you take ownership away from someone, you take his dignity away. So I would rather say, give title deeds to all the people, whether it's an RDP house or not, and give him dignity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Just one, just one thing before the next speaker. The written submission process was done and concluded by the fifteenth of June. So we're not taking any submissions here. This is a public hearing, oral presentations. All right, so if you have, speak to your notes, if you've made a submission, just speak to it within the allocated time. And we don't take that as an official submission because the formal, formal and official submissions were concluded on the fifteenth of June. Interpreter?
Ki kupahu, xla kisa ntlaha hori. Kaja nule na harimona hotla, ngati peisa, nuzwe ngozwe. Obari leran yehela na kamenye tla onu, meri leraguala, kala leshumele mizwe melxanu, pupjan. Ritilemona bizonya sichaba, hotlo nyonya ma ikutwa sichab. Hayba mxtama ona le di peisa, nuzwe di ngozwe mfasi. Oka, oza hotza, hotza ona, hau bua mona nasabayen. Ki hatelan tla u di peisa, nuzwe ngozwe. Nakua teni se, kwezu, kwezu, kala leshumele, la, leshumele mizwe melxanu, pupjan, kialibu.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Sebenzi Tigan. I'm one of the carriers of this idea of land expropriation without compensation since twenty-ten. LGC of the ANC Youth League in Galaga Estate. Eh, I'm very proud of you, Floyd and Julius telling him that finally we have arrived. Chair, the parliament that took, the Union Parliament of South Africa that was formed in nineteen ten, that after the formation of the ANC in nineteen twelve, set and promulgated the nineteen thirteen land native act, was not as inclusive as this process. It was a white-only arrangement which never allowed black people to add their views. Therefore, it was illegal, an illegal gathering. Then section twenty-five seeks to protect that very illegal nineteen thirteen land act. Now, we cannot in this inclusive government of today exalt the mistakes or the recklessness of white people of nineteen thirteen. Section twenty-five of the constitution should be amended because black people, they are the majority of this country. Actually, they are the owners of the land in paper, in history. But if you go and make a physical audit of where are black people placed in South Africa today, black people are all, there's no white hobo in South Africa. Black people are hobos, black people are prostituting. Black people are found in all shameful places in their own land. White people are owning hectares of land. They even breed wild animals while black people do not have a place to stay. Now, it is high time that we go and take that land from these white people. You cannot have a wild animal, a lion, having a place to sleep when a black person does not have a place to sleep in a democratic South Africa. The very same international laws that they are referring to. Why didn't they refer to those laws in nineteen thirteen? The very same dignity that they claim that people will lose in South Africa. We don't have it already, we want to reclaim it. Now, section twenty-five is our weapon to reclaim the dignity of black people in South Africa. We are not saying white people are irrelevant. They can still come together with us and expropriate with us. If they don't agree, it's their loss, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, next speaker.
Thank you very much. Eh, my name is Lazos Kulobi. Eh, I support the idea of the amendment of our constitution, section twenty-five, in order to allow the expropriation of land without compensation. Eh, I would like to first appreciate this opportunity presented to us by the leadership here, in particular, Comrade Floyd and Comrade Malama. We salute you, Comrade. You took a very good initiative that you must present this issue in parliament that we are here today. Thank you very much, Comrade. Eh, Comrade, I think it is very important that the black people, who are the majority of this country, should be given chance to own the land so that they can also be able to participate in the economy of this country. As a black people, most of us, we do not have the land. Therefore, we cannot participate in the economy of the country. That is why when you compare to South Africa with other countries like Nigeria, you find that we are, we are now competing with countries like Nigeria economically. Whereas before, South Africa was one of the highest economically powerful countries in, in Africa. The reason why is because black people are excluded in participating in the economy of this country. So we therefore call upon the parliament that you should please consider giving the black people chance to own, to own the land as well. We cannot have a situation whereby most of our young people, they are still, they are still staying at the backyard of their parents. Eh, whereas there's a, a, someone else there by the name of an vehicle, an, an abo who owns close to sixty-five eh, farms somewhere. That is not eh, eh, reasonable enough. We therefore say that the government must see to it that each and every black person must be given chance to also to participate. And the issue of land is very critical because it is, it gives respect to particular people. It gives respect and people take you serious because of the, you have the land. As long as we do not have the land, other people or other races should always take us for granted. In conclusion, I'm a history teacher, people. I'm always teaching people, my learners, that people, eh, some, there's a, there's a, a myth that has been created that many years ago, our people, the land was taken away from our people. Eh, people were given things such as mirrors and whatever, what, what have you. Eh, today, as, eh, 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 as professional, as educators as we are, our land is being taken away from us by the other eh, eh, foreign Indian eh, people in South Africa. Right here in front of us. So we call upon them, give our people a chance to own the land so that they must participate in the economy and improve the economy of this country. I thank you.
Next speaker.
Kialibo. Libisolaka ki mama sappemo chosi leto lala plasi niya nothunki kale flagdi hona mona Virginia. Eh, hobo shoko horo na, ho ho la rela ba chababa kanana, ntsiribonala hona joali, re san sanin re sotwa kale fatela bonita de babonita de moholo baro. Eh, silemonsa 1988, kisan sanin kinali ATS, ndatemoholoaka, ona ajala ma te kwan, hori abono hori, si fu basaronasia for. Tekahoho kere, rebata hobona gavamete yena yarona, iritu sa oru lefaze lena laboro, lihutela horo, leto se taro, baba swewu, badin kilay kasi la esaloka, zalo kanta ta sa salusi so hori, bana basana kadi kiepeka na kwanene, re san sanin repata leto huiya sa history, re sa ba tuhi tuaka history yena yabo. Rebata hobona, dimai ne taro, di ohunwa ki ba tu baba tu. Rebata hobona, hososa etwe, ma keshini atwa na lema no mono thugio omforvaha, hau sa ba tu ho sebe leza motuya muswewu, ebewa uku alobe was ba keso thugio omforvaha, hosna di shopo, hosna di clinic. Le san sanin lulu hona na konya hona joali lulu na baba swewu, lebata huritita zalo kana koya pele, re san sanin re na leba tu ba luhurba hona refasola maso. Dimai ne za de lezo na na konya hona joali ntsiriblo lahuti ohunwa ki boso ne pulu, balo, bata di mineral ha be kaikaikaika, rona ki mo sanin reko bata di mineral ha lefaze le sa hutela horo. Because all of us, le rona ba ta oba rich, as a kachalte fa la moro ba rich. Eh, lin kilay di koma sa rona ritula lezo na kadi jarte, wele hori, ekosa palmona rituba kolosis, mo baba swewu baba ta hobona ntsirishwa ka bo nga. La har se reshu ele, ntsirisote ya, reka ma bi ka, kachalte resna nyon. Ha lefaze lo leka hutela horo, haro lo reka ma bi ka, ha lo hori, le nojana ntsirabata lena banu reso ka riswa. Lefaze ha le hutela horo na, reja le ripi di se, lihutela holo lihutela hola na taro. Kialibo.
Interpret.
My name is Mamochakwa Mochosi, from a farm named Calfat here in Virginia. I support the amendment of the constitution to get land expropriation without compensation. In 1988, when I was eight years old, my grandfather used to plant my vagina as a method to cure our flu. What I want to see is to have black-owned mines where we as black people also have the opportunity to mine minerals. I believe that white people still want to oppress us, they still want to treat us as if we are in the olden days. We pay for graveyards because we do not own land. We want our land back. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Libisolaka ki lefa, sifaniki mushoyane. Ki lewezi, myyentlaona wakasheko, ibile ki lewa le, di political party ze ntsirihor, zazilena, reho noe ma mona, rubu yeka tabena obani, ner sa zigu rtilaka. Eh, le mushoyane, rinkezwe pla simani Excelsior. Yaha mushoyane, eksa zebengor haba tu, rebata ma fazi arona haba rikisui saidi hawe zalan. Kanakwe, nebasaboni ili suicide habanka plasi taro. Ba in kilay insache we hori ripikele ri, batwajwa runava dula Excelsioro, batlaye zete, runar laye zee Cape Town. Redisplace zizo hori berlo laye la Cape Town. Har la Cape Townu, epontata waruna, hati ha be ki ba tu ba boko, batige la Cape Townu kama la othu ma upele, onu inzwe ki ma bu, ra itola rlibu putazwa. Har rlibu putazwa na ra jwetsu wa ha be hori rebatwa. Uipose hori mari, nakihokai. Ande me la we na ka fe la esuwa ki ba tu bo wa bona ngantro ba shaha Europe. Kachekule na ki, kidumelana le hori, mula o uchinchiuwe, wa section 25i hori, tlero ho, ho hutese zwa, lefaze la runa murahu eh. Wa le, ilara ki hutela he, kamera tokolo, ki ka freestyle. Ki leka uka kisna ma tla, au claima plasi yaro na, because ki ntsi ki zeba hori, hubaning runa ribileli plasi ba tu ba basna di plasi. Ka ukisi sa hori, plasi yeu, lele fazi lena ka fe la lena, ki la runa ka fe la ba tu ba mona. Ki ona ntele ya, ki kuwe kisa ukisi zuro, why should ki kibe li plasi? Cheka ma hua ama nganali di plasi, whereas ba tu ba basna zora. So ki ngarri, lefazi lena, ki la runa ka fe la, ha le hutela hori runa ka fe la, wa lo ka, inele la runa pihle ba ta mona. Kialibo, hulu mi ki sapota mula o ame.
Kialibo, kantate, interpret.
Name is Lefa Mushoyane. I'd like to greet all the political parties. Our farm was expropriated from us, taken by first from us in Excelsior. My family was then moved to Cape Town and from Cape Town under the Native Act land, we were also then later moved to Botswana. Then we came back to the free state. I would also like to get our land back. Therefore, I support that we should amend the section 25 of the constitution. I support land expropriation without compensation.
Next speaker.
Haki lebo we motama isi, muholi muhi fo hau, libisolaka ki adam weema, me kiratafe la hori. Yes, I agree with land expropriation without compensation. For me, I see this as a process of fairness, correcting the incorrect, balancing the imbalance of the past. We now have a golden opportunity so that we can claim the land back as the indigenous landowner of the land. It has been taken from us by the settlers and they came forcefully, take it without our concern. Some of our elders fought, but they were defeated. And fortunately for the settlers, they decided to make the laws like the land act of 1913. They make it legally that the land belonged to them. Even today, some of the Agri Forum members, when they speak, they simply understand that this is my land because it was legal. They see it as an officiated process. They don't understand that, what do you call it? The dignity that they are talking about has been taken from us. They cannot understand and it will never be understood for them. Now, I'm begging them, I'm saying we are going to take the land back without compensation. My emphatic should be saying without compensation. And if we can understand that the process is to ensure that everyone have equally footing, it will be fair. It is totally unfair that all the settlers own 80% of the land and we only own 7%. I mean, we must just reverse the imbalance of the past. So that is my input and I'm saying let us amend the constitution. And it must be clear, without compensation. I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning. I'm from Tocologo Street here, 14th Waranghi Land Community. I want to start quickly, to ask, we all have ground, but what can we make of the ground? Can we produce it? I live in a land that is already left behind and there is no money to pay our Eskom revenues and all the money can't be paid. Will we, I support Article 25 because it could cause total chaos in the economy in the plateau land. We can't have any income, we can't have any business. I mean, it can't be so serious only on land, but our land that we have has to produce and that makes the communities alive and that we can be inspired to do it. I thank you.
Thank you, Lord. Next speaker. Kialu medisa. Eh, kikanaka bu. Relax, relax, kina ki bua joali se. Mameli man. Iche naga leseba. Ejoali, ki mochalo. Hello, hello. Ejoali. Tolala mameli, ki abuama. Hold on, who's using the mic? Wait.
Eh, sekuku efe la ho, obuasenda de vili vesi, asibiliyekituse zewanda, dona lo tata wasbu. Nda de vili vesi, oru lama ni tokolo, saite nza boboshofoma. Me, ki...
Sorry, thank you very much. May we allow parliament to take its process and allow those that are invited to stop over? Parliament must translate, this is your process. The parliament has been translating, parliament must translate. We cannot allow that. Can we have?
Hold on, hold on, order, order, order. Hold on, order, order, order. Minne vesi, can you speak English? Look, wait, wait, hello, hello, the committee, hello, members of the public. We have consulted the committee, has agreed a volunteer. We don't know the person, so we have asked him to come and help us with volunteering. So he is volunteering and is talking. And remember, it's our process. We've agreed that we will understand. He is interpreting, so we all understand the committee. All right, so we have allowed him to volunteer. So continue, sir, in less than a minute.
I'm a volunteer.
Members of the public, just interpret.
Kabo futsu anyanefel. Well, chapasina, I'm under your protection now, I don't know because... Nda de vili vesi. Nda de vili vesi hori.
Members, order.
I'm not gonna be part of this, not gonna be part of this chaos.
Order. All right, the speaker, we're giving the speaker a minute to say the position.
Can I go on?
Summarize your speech, sir.
Okay, I will try to do it in English, what I say. My English is not that good, but I will try. I represented Tocologo Farmers' Union and all the Tocologo Farmers' Associations there. And I'm beginning to ask what the government will do with all the land. We are against the taking of our ground under the section 25. And I want to know, if you all have the farm and the land, what are you going to do with that? I said that if the communities in the plateau land, I'm not sure what's the English word for that, didn't get income from the landowners and the lands in town, they haven't got money, they even can't pay the Eskom accounts. Where the money will come from? I know that all of us want land, but land must be productive and that productivity of the land must pay the plasleke regeren to do their job, to give some, what's the word? To help the people and give everything to the people to help them better their lives. So I hope I come through to English. It was not my meaning to upset the people in the floor, but okay, I'm not speaking well English because I didn't talk every day, so enjoy it further.
Next speaker.
Kialibo, kina vusi le pen, ki mo aiwa mona na tabo, eh, kese tosa Congress of the People. Me joali he, ma ikutwa kati hori. Eh, le rona, ya obata mobu, zalo kaba tu baba tu. Impa, ari sa, ari sa apoti, oro ochichwe constitutione yana ha, section 25i hau lolo mula wana u. Kati ba oru leto hau la, kati ba leto hau la, ki mochawa lo na, le joali kiala teba.
No, 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 no. No, order.
Rin kilay jete obani kisa osapoti mula wana hau la.
We said, members of the public, you are affecting the parliamentary process and it's unfair. If you are serious about land, you have to be serious in this hall. If you are serious about this subject matter for today, you must be orderly. Otherwise, you are compromising the process of parliament. So please refrain.
Thank you, thank you chapasina, protect our mother ana, atiba joali. Eh, tretan riskera sapota mula wana, ona ti hori.
Address the committee, sir.
Okay, kialibo, mdu lastu de le komiti ha. Eh, mula wana ona wa section 25i, ose bediye na konye fitile, impa fe la elo musoa rona wa African National Congress. Edelo ona osabate hori, ofe ba tu mobu kanaa ko. Obani, mula wana ona na, hona le ba tu ba ntsi ba kense di ko po. Le ha na joali, ntsi ba soka ba ufula eh, lefaze le obana ba kupila obana busete. Impa, mula wana ona ose bediye, antate esma kashule. Impa, mola wana ona osebe diite, antate Esma Raxule Ane Afah, morawa hai plasi manu friede. Mo ai le ngamo fa plasi, washwa di profolo, za lebesi mo, plasi ene, eh, eh, plasi ebuto kwa oluka ro, o province ya ro na freestyle. Mola wana ona na osebe diite hap, ha, Chapessin, the National Council of Provinces, Metandi Mudise. Ai pa plasi mane, mo, di profolo di leza, washwa kase flohote. Juale, leza si nenana lakashepule, arisa na tepo muso obusanore. Lefasi reta lefumana relebatu babatu. Obani, lefasi habale aba, bale abela di nyatiza bo ona, bale abela ba na ba bo bo ona.
Order.
Lefasi habale aba, bale abela batu beulindi tosa African National Congress efeela. Juale, krebasi e di nyao na, ekaba lerona na haritusa harichincha mola wana ona wa section twenty-five. Na haritoka abela lefasi lenana na, obani rona redi tosa African National Congress. Juale, bo na ba aba lefasi ka ro na, ose tosa African National Congress e, lore na o nyatia manka romha. Eh le muetapi, ofe ta fe ta mo. Mo re du la.
Yadin dati, na koe feti.
Kial eboa, mdu lastu.
Members of the public. Hey, order. I, I want to remind you again, you are compromising the parliamentary process. You are, you are compromising the parliamentary process. People here will speak things that you like and things that you don't like. They will speak before the committee. It's their right, respect people's rights to speak.
Sompang, tukelo yaba, to, ba ta isema ikutwa bo ona. Mu te mule mungyata buwa muna otansama ikutwa hai, kana go ngutla, arada, kana go moskawa arada.
English, is we, in English translation, sir.
Eh, vuisile pim, ore otsamoke mokop, ye na ore, ha aba kli hori. Oh, he doesn't want the constitution to be amended. He says this section was amended before and it's just the incompetence of the ANC eh, by delaying eh, expropriation of, of this land. There's been earlier eh, claims that were done, but they were not finished. He says, he mentioned two examples of eh, farms that were expropriated. He mentioned the Frede Farm which was expropriated by Esma Raxule and the Farm in North West which was expropriated by eh, Metandi Mudise.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Yes. Eh, yinta desu hu, I'm from Allen Ridge, it's a mining town. I rise here to support Uchinshua Amula ona. I'm saying that because we have been exposed as black people. Mone re displays wa de imba tubankua ba isua, na inseti imba isua bo, kwa akwa ba isua bo, but saben. So we are saying, now is the time to change that particular eh, eh, clause from the constitution. We are saying that because land is about everything. We want to respond to the people barring haritsebe regrets and haring galefazi. We want to, to sustain ourselves through that particular land. Kiba taoto le ma, kiba taoto urua, kiba taoto aha, kiba taoba le si riti, lefasi nona le. So, tikahore gen, lefasi alu. Lu hutani muguwa walon. Meaning that, when we have land, we will be having our own economy in the end. So we are saying yes to that particular change of the law. We want to indicate that this, the, the, the previous eh, system. Ya, ya ufa na galefazi ka willing buyer, willing seller, didn't work. We have been fleeting around that particular eh, system, saying, give us the land. They've been, they, they, the white and the minority didn't want to surrender their land. Because they were asking for exorbitant amount of money. Asa batlo fa na galefazi le, we cannot come here today and pretend as if everything was rigid old. No, they didn't. They were holding on to that particular land. Hence there today, once more saying eh, they want to, eh, to protect their properties. What properties? Our people were dispossessed of the, of their own properties. Through a rent value. Kiateba ore lefasi le registo karan da, ba twa ba ho. Asen tuenjako ikuangajil. Ban, hauna di panpi, ba, ba, di wita fiti mo na di bonsi, sa, ba na li panpi. Se bon taor ba ileba re, kaka ba ba, ban, ba ona lefasi le. So it simply means our people were dispossessed of their own land. Therefore, the time is now that the land must return to their rightful owners. So we are appealing to the parliament to change the, the, that particular clause in the constitution. We are saying enough is enough and the time is now that the people should own the land. And let the, the land be taken without any compensation. We are saying the land back to the owners. Redutite na nagabat ba ai, basenan di sa. People without title deeds, people without dignity, in their own land. So that is why we are saying let the land return to its rightful owners.
Next speaker.
Thank you Che. My name is Buli Botma. I'm a farmer owner and a producer in the Boitabu District. Che, why I don't think it's necessary for the government to expropriate without compensation? Is that government already has bought more than four thousand farms? And the individuals that they have identified to farm on those farms do not have title. They cannot farm. So it's very easy for someone else to say it's a disaster. Let them get the title. Or let them get the money to buy and then get the title. Che, I want to tell you what a government did in the past that was wrong. Has to be rectified by a government that is in city, not individuals that has bought land. I would like to tell you what government currently owes in as far as land is concerned. The National Department of Rural Development owns nearly twenty comma seven million hectares. The Department of Public Works has almost two million hectares of unutilized land. And the Department of Agriculture, Forestry and Fisheries has almost seventy-three thousand hectares of farmland. That's just the property that's owned by three departments of our government. So why do we want to steal property from private title deed holders, private individuals? When government is sitting with so much land? Much of it which is suitable for development and agriculture. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Tumela, fui amora, good morning colleagues and residents in the Wachibeng area. I, my name is David Ross and I reside in this area. Eh, I would like to state that the area is in favor of land reform and restitution, but not in favor of expropriation of land without compensation. We believe that eh, section twenty-five of the constitution does not hinder the land reform process, but it's rather the management eh, of the land reform process that was problematic. And I'll, I have three issues that I'd just like to point out why I'm saying this. First of all, it's because of the inappropriate budgeting in the twenty February main budget at parliament. And you will find in that main budget, in terms of the spending programs on the main budget, the first page of that main budget, there's eight programs that's mentioned, but land reform is not one of them. And if you do a comparative analysis with the amounts that were allocated in terms of, to the land reform, you will find that, eh, let me take an example, for the social grants, it's about five hundred and twenty-four billion allocated. For eh, eh, higher education, it's three hundred and twenty-four billion. But for land reform, we will see that there's only, and this is in the medium term, only ten point eight billion budgeted for the medium term. This is unacceptable if you find then on the medium term, ten billion, but per year it is about two billion rand. I think as parliamentarians, we need to go back to the budget office. And I've engaged with Professor Jahati in terms of this. And I would like to urge this committee to engage with the budget office that we see that there's a true commitment to proper land reform in terms of proper budgeting, that would be the first point. The second point that I'd like to make is the decline in the economy and perhaps the tax base if we amend the budget. We need policy certainty and I believe that will impact in terms of investment, so much needed for the current situation in South Africa where we have one point five percent in terms of growth and then inflation coming up on five point three. So we have a stagflation situation in the country. Stagflation simply means that we have a very low growth and high inflation rate and I believe that needs to address. And then lastly, I'd just like to put on my Scopa hat to say that we can save a lot of money if we can really stop the fiscal waste in this country. And the fiscal waste, in stopping that, we can then allocate those funds to proper land reform budgeting. And that's the point I'd like to make. But let me just quickly, and I think eh, eh, my colleagues in Scopa will acknowledge this, that in terms of the waste, where we have irregular expenditure, which is the non-compliance in terms of legislation, at the national level and in, in terms of eh, state-owned entities, you will see forty-six billion rand eh, irregular expenditure. And that is only sixty-seven percent of the entities that submitted their financial statements. It is really not good. But then also, in, then also in terms of local, twenty-eight billion rand wasted, those monies can be allocated to land reform. I thank you very much, Chapessin.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Eh, my name is Lesiro Hongwe and I come from Black Management Forum. Um, the parliamentary, there's a need for, for economic growth and eh, food security in our country. And one of the things that eh, there is that we are not going to be like Zimbabwe. Um, we need enterprise development in the context of developing the young people in our communities so that they can take their land and take over um, the farms that are in place. And one of the things is, um, food security is very important, very, very important. One of the things that I have realized is that there are twenty-five billion cubic in Tunisia and Virginia. That is underground of gas. But it has never been expropriated because there is someone who doesn't want to sell a farm. If that person sell that farm, that will create more than ten thousand jobs for the young people in this province. So, I support the motion that we need to expropriate the land by force. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chapessin. Eh, my name is Siabonga Sigade. Eh, a resident of Wachibeng, local municipality, from Virginia. Eh, I'm standing here representing the generation of King Moswesh, the generation of King Inzak Ejio, the generation of Bambata rebellion. I'm representing young and old who are staying in the backyard of their parents because they are landless. I'm representing young people who at night turns kitchens into bedrooms because they do not have land, because they have nowhere else to sleep. I am here supporting amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution. Because it means, amendment of section twenty-five means discontinuation of an unequal society. Amendment of section twenty-five constitution, it means discontinued perpetuation of poverty because our communities do not have land. Expropriation of land without compensation should not be a threat to every, to everybody, to anybody. Eh, when we expropriate land without compensation, it means that we are bringing back the dignity of our people back. Because our people have lost dignity, our people have lost respect because they are landless. When we talk about the issue of land, we don't talk about a redundant land or a land nearby Slum Dems. We are talking about a profitable land. We are talking about commercial land, we are talking about privately owned land. Who in majority of that land is in the hands of minority white people? And white people must never be threatened when we talk about land and/or, or else feel threatened. Because if we talk about land and they feel threatened, then they must know we have been threatened ever since we are born. When we talk about land, the house of traditional leaders, if we talk about land expropriation without compensation, house of traditional leaders, they must not project themselves as tradition. Because we're not talking about that small portion of thirteen percent of land they are owning for our people. We are talking about the prime land in towns. We are talking about the privately owned land, we are talking about a profitable land. We are talking about a land that will make our people have means. Because the basis and fundamental of our people's struggle, it was never about blue lights, it was never about people being president or not, it was about land. It is that generation of Pixika Isaga Seme that were representing today and that is smiling in their graves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name is Fili Malagwane, a political activist here in Belko. For quite a number of reasons, I strongly support constitutional amendment of section twenty-five in our constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation for equitable redistribution. In fact, it was wrong from the onset for us to allow a sunset clause because that section itself is part of the sunset clauses that we actually agreed upon as we were negotiating for our freedom. Now we are saying it entrenches, section twenty-five entrenches property ownership and control in the hands of private eh, eh, owners. Now that on its own is a problem because ultimately, you are not going to liberate the very same people that you seek to liberate. You are subjecting them to perpetual poverty because it might happen that they will never actually own land in this country because those who own land, especially the majority of people who own land in this country happens to be white people. Eh, if there's no legislation that is actually a deliberate legislation to expropriate or to address that problem, it will never be addressed because the landless would remain landless forever if it is not actually being addressed by the government itself. So we should not actually allow ourselves to be held to ransom by a legislation because section twenty-five should not be cast in stone. Since it is our creation, we need to change that legislation because we are not actually, we, we have not been created by legislation, but in fact we have created a legislation. So we need to revisit that legislation. Eh, we know for a fact that private individuals, people who own land in this country, they have this primary motive of maximization of profit. So, anything that does not actually yield a profit, they are not actually going to barge to say that, okay, let us actually free this land so that other people must have eh, eh, access to land. have access to land. They will never do that. It is upon us, as people who are seated here, to say that since we are aware that this land has actually been, let me say confiscated, there is no way that we are going to buy a stolen land because we know for a fact that it has been stolen from us. Now, to buy it back, that on its own is a crime because how can you buy a stolen property? To say we are going to be like Zimbabwe if we are going to follow this route that says that we must expropriate land, no. That is not correct because the model that we are going to use is different from that of Zimbabwe. Ours is a very responsible model.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Right, we gonna take the next batch of 20? Next speaker.
Can I speak? No, thanks, Chairperson. I think I'll premise my input on the Constitution of South Africa, which is also premised on the Freedom Charter, that claims that South Africa belongs to all who live in it. And if you understand that the current patterns in the country of ownership of land negate that premise. They negate that premise, so is section 25. The current conditions of land ownership are unsustainable and abnormal, where you have foreigners, white foreigners in distance owning land and blacks, South Africans do not own land, that can be normal. So the redress therefore is necessary, hence the change of section 25. Democracy prevail on the basis of acceptance of the views of the majority and minority views are noted. Minority views cannot prevail over the majority views. Now, the few groups who are objecting this notion of change in section 25, I advise that they must go and make a pride, take a bull's horse and say to their ancestors, Papa, our apartheid is no more working. Or if better said, Papa, die apartheid van ons kan nie verder. So that we are able to accept that it will never come back. We are going to rule this country and apartheid will not come back. Section 25 also deals with the property ownership. We want to deal with property ownership. Every northern part of our towns, it is property owners with their Porsche houses owned by whites, male whites for that matter. And that cannot be normal. In fact, they even organize contrast to the economic path of every local government and go the other way when it is necessary. The Freedom Charter further says, every person who must own farm, the land must belong to all who work it. Whites who own farms don't work that land, they have black people working for them. And yet they don't own those land, they abuse them and exploit them. So for sustainability and progress of South Africa and protection of democracy, you therefore need to change section 25 to accommodate South Africans and they must own land and we must move forward.
Next speaker.
Kala wuwa, Mudula Stulo, ke rancho mentalwani otuakoo Botavie. Kidu melana le mono wa the amendment of the Constitution, section 25 of the land expropriation without compensation. Chairperson, allow me to educate. Or the land expropriation without compensation means that all land should be transferred to the ownership and custodianship of the state. Like it happened, au nehusua, the mineral petroleum resources act aliena hituwa kade year 2002. As a young generation, you go by, this committee, it accepted the land expropriation without compensation. Akitola pele, Mudula Stulo, geratari, this transfer should happen without compensation and should be applied to all black South Africans, black and white. Akitola ketele nita batzaka, Mudula Stulo, mogi lantik kolekishi nina botavie. Nala, Sabreji, Nala is underdeveloped semi-rural municipality dependent on agricultural economy with little industrial and commercial development. A hundred percent of land is still owned by the white minority who constitute only 5.8% of total population of Nala at the exclusion of 91.3% of the black African majority. That's not fair. As a Y, as a young generation, geratari, that situation should immediately be changed. Kala wu.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Castro Taban, I represent the generation of original economic freedom fighter. We are here to support the amendment of the Constitution, particularly the section 25, to bring about certainty and clarity on land expropriation without compensation. I think we are not apologizing on that one. It is important to indicate that the history of our people, it is the history of dispossession of land and cattle. And this creating justice committed on our people and the assault on that dignity should be reversed. And there's no better way of reversing this than returning land to the original owners. We are not going to do it like it was done by forefathers of certain people using the barrel of the gun, but we're going to do it through proper constitutional and legal Now, the constitution is going to be amended to deal with these issues. It is also important to indicate that we are encouraging the parliament to also put in place the legal framework in which this land expropriation without compensation need to be carried out. The third point that I want to make is that we support the current model on the land tenure system. We believe that the current model is okay with a mixture of private, state, and traditional ownership of land. However, we are saying that that need to be transformed to reflect the demographics of this country, that the majority of land need to be owned by majority of African people who are downtrodden, who are dispossession of land. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Kidlo to support the motion, new amendment to section 25 of our Constitution under the following reasons. Number one, ki, kiwata wusaisa hori mula wana, mula wanyana, ona wa 25, section 25, kona woli olengwa fa expropriation act, yani saliye tuaki apartheid ma. Ahore, motamotso, unale to kela fela ya, oke yena ka, ona seven percent ya di hectares tamu, while majority ba neba, ba injoya, the rest eighty-two percent. Number two, land act of 1913 and 196, kiwala yani ente wuwa batwa batso, badule balitla sa hatel ya bo fuma, landless and homeless. Ibi lo shoka mesebezi fo ba shabaro, because majority wa mobu, nzo ownaki individually ba shulango ku fana kamska mesebezi. Kiwata komishalens, ibi la wata komishalens, efe la wata owna di di mineral steka, las kamu, kamu, kamu. Kiwata krika mesebezi, kiwata hulu kula bomne, kasa triple action eba sente balika kasa yonanha, na jale tina la. Ri mo bu, ha ku tete tobe ba ona, ba o, ku enkama haapa, ibi lo sa patalo. Hona mota yilinga patala mo bu, hani, anka mo bu ku ba shaba batso. Kiwata wetamshala, unale no kaka mula na, evitwa ti ku. Hatikuene ukuwa horo na, ukuaki e private or individual person, hona, isala patala rant. Kiwata wutiba horo na, yo na yo, hasi kire plenti na, pa wasa kire plenti ha ba etan tu, because hona mota yilinga fana, atla ka, reciti, bonza hori, kire kilo mo bu ku na, na iki ente di ntsu so kaofala. Kiwata mo bu ha ona ukuutla, zana ente di nta horo, huna le di, fruitless and whatever expenditure, kala ti ku na kamu ka. Kiwata mo bu.
Interpreter.
Kidu du meisakon fela the greater. Good afternoon. My name is Mathilda Chabet Chadeve. I stand here in support of section 25. As I can, most of the land is privately owned, so we want commishalent, we also want to have mineral ownership rights, we want our land back. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Kili di meisakon fela the great of Lijaluputwa, amanda. My name is Zenobi Amabakomplani, ke toa kwan na motuwa kudranu Maspele wa Machabeng, ke le toa la la mula na Free State. Committee va tapeli Lijaluputwa, ku tabo shoku, ki rincho tezai, zai umuwa batwa di ba rune, libote timo lo ba rune, because this act, Sabodlenkri Act, yani, yah 1894, libodi native, za 1913, di la la, za hori, hori za zilela kage nu, hau ba so holo bo na, bo ku hulu, ba ku hulu ba lone, olo ko pa hosona pool. O koko ote heisi, o koko, ko pa holo, holo kena libite, lande temu hulu, kilo ko pa maso no. Ntsu rohupula, kaba tu ba miato, rune, ba na ba shaba sa ranzu. Kiwa, opasintech, ya wana ya Free State, Free State in a fastel kana katofo, nine million, twelve million hectares, seven percent geasdeet, seven percent geasdeet, ninety-one percent geaprived, geabatwa na, ba privedere, ba buta, ira ba buta. I'm very sorry, utu tena ama bo. And two percent, keresai zibuna ya bo ma, ya bo ku ne lizebezi kwanana, bo mo yen, zoruto kaika. Eh, kiwata hutse iba hori na, le fatse lena na, la two percent de, le ninety-one percent, re lufmanana ne ne, li kuutla lo huku, ne kuutla lo koko te la, bo basri heisi. Ki kuutla lo holo ne ama bo, ne 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 ri ri, ba na ba batwa, ba zibu jal. Kena ka ra ma ku shina runo, uxe ba ka ra ma kamra di beki, ya di za runa, re na le miro, re na le di tamadri, re na le di eyi, re zibu jal, li tola ha zibu jal, kaba di ba de di hectares o za runa, za rune, ra di ba ta.
Interpreter.
My name is Noyabiile, Amabakomplani, from Kudranu. I stand here in support of the amendment of the Constitution, like us to move away from the native act. The Free State has tough with nine billion hectares and we want those hectares land, we want our back land. And as for the white people who are claiming that we can't farm, you guys should walk around, look in our backlands, you'll see that we also can farm. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Chairperson, and the members of your committee. My name is Vela P. Gamawela. I reside here in Machabeng, particularly in Velko. This process, according to me, is long overdue. It cannot be correct that today, when our government is talking about land expropriation without compensation, then we have people who are starting to talk to us about integrity. Why didn't they talk about integrity in 1913? Why today? Chairperson, I support the amendment. We need not to forget that there are people who laid down their lives fighting for the return of the land to its rightful owners. We must not be apologetic when we say expropriation of land without compensation. We all know one an apology. This land belongs to us, it's our land. We had no problems. Our problems started in 1652, when the three ships were in Cape Town, when the first white men landed on this land. Before the... Before that, we had no problems with land. Let the land come to the people. The people need land. I say you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Easy late. Eh, kala wa modulas tulu, limu fota manlo. Eh, modulas tulu. Le na kere ki sabota emotion ona ware, lefatsi halikulele ba tumbaro. Lefatsi halieba tumbaba. Kadile ve ne, za februari, ita harera ba tuwabankemo obu. Kia hopula pila tosama ne, ine kareke, tureke zai zebi. Impa yokoporo, modulas tulu, before ba tuwate tella bankamo obu o feita. Ba ne basa ba du sitosa, fitisa mula ona, horo ba tuwabele mo obu, bankemo obu. Ba tuwabatu habebele mo obu, ba tuwabatu ba na li di kampani, di sebele ta kahara di jarreti, mara mahoa ba na li di hektara, za di, za, za, za mobu, kahara lefatsi lesin la won. Fa ba tuwabatu mo obu. Ki fitisa na, ki laga okutwa okuwa horo, modulas tulu beke fitile, hakile mama silo ma ne, tineze. Ki ke no kolo inyaka fela beki fuma na kolo beki sata kolo yakakiya tineze. Ki fuma na me, le ta te, ba du lamba le ba beedi. Bahile se tense konu tina, bahile kamo kukuku. Asa ba tuwabaka, asa febiliaka. Ma re, ki ilemona ki yakere, erikilo bona se ba tuwama silo tineze, banpi te tanso. Ki fuma na me le ta tonan, ki ni fofu ba le ba beedi haba bone. Ba du te kahara buku, halifatsi le kutela le ba tumbaro, kala bo.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, interpreter?
Eh, ki moja ki hotule.
Inter- interpreter?
The demoja ki hotule supports the amendment. That's English, sir. The demoja ki hotule supports the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution to allow for eh, land to be expropriated without compensation. He says there are lots and lots of black people who are operating their businesses in their backyard whilst their white counterparts have flourishing businesses that have establishments all over. Now, if they are given opportunities to have a piece of land, they will establish their businesses elsewhere.
Next speaker.
Agole bo, etza mishomsebezi. Na kere tavo sipega, kela Melody, kaya iletinga, ba kere lala ma silo tineze ne. Ku gabo oku, ha uwa ka lefatsi, hobani. Na kere motweshi na kiswana lelfatsi. Ha okashaba lehoha, ntuha lehua kipevi, kiskonke. Na, hake lo batwa, hake kena libite ngoto mobu mobu. Hake tibele hua lo na halibatwa hoti. Ki ba ta hori, juwe, za hori, na. Honali, honali, le ntsula lele ring. The land first, all shall follow. Mapuru, ba tetsewa ndatata onamo holo. Ga ho ta kadi tulu, zana zenu kuluhuha. Nga demojuwe, hana fama buru suto njo lelfatsi. Ba le ba mobe, ha du ma stulo, asa ta komele, buru stulo zana sadukuluwa. Ba re oru sehe la, utwa hakai, uviye la hakai. Le buru le sore kamo ra, aru kere fa, unuwa mona. Ha potela kama na kati ba rukuli sa stulo, sa poja, kati, ba kala fatsi la ro na, kabo mena me.
Order.
Lefatsi, kela she hofa ni zo, kete olor. Kete widi mu olari, ba larumbo troni, haru bo pe mucho. Ta utwana leka se bubu ya osarona. Haru, haru bo pe lehoha, obani lehoha, asa mucho. Lehua retse ona lepatwa kai, lepatwa pevi, kapa lepatwa kara samen. Na kere kutela mobu, obani mobu ken na. Na rtuha la kati ne kamo. Kati robo, kati robo, ote ti gi pevi. Kati robo, ote ti gi konjere. Impa, oro na ma keshening, rebo obu. Obani lemo, mo bo na na, ba ro na. Ha okutela oro na mobu, kiala bo.
Thank you. Interpreter? Interpreter?
Lizo la, lizo la, kere tavo sipega, ki wot committee, ya Melody, ya wotsebe.
My name is Tavosi Pega from Melody. I stand here as a black person who is as dark as this land that I stand on. I'm not sure about white people, as they are as light as this paving roads or tar roads. However, as much as our land was, as our land was taken by Trigory, taken away from us, they gave our leaders, like Moshe Shewi, climbing chairs to toss around while they were busy stealing our land. I know for sure that white people are not human beings. But all I want to say is that I support us being given back our land back. We want our land back. We want this land which is as dark as us. This land belongs to us.
Next speaker.
Um, thank you very much, House Chair. Let me take this wonderful opportunity to greet the leadership, the leadership of EFF. Um, my name is Sueli Mahano. I am here in favor of the motion that suggests that we must expropriate land without compensation. Uh, House Chair, we are gathered here to correct the historical injustices of the nineteen thirteen land act. We are here to expropriate without compensation. We are here to restore dignity and heal the wounds caused by the most diabolic system introduced by Professor Hendrik Verfoot, the system of apartheid. Let us not shy away from the fact that the struggle for black people has always been about land. The formation of black political parties in this country has always been about land and advocate for human dignity and equality. Again, we are here to correct the political transition that happened in nineteen ninety-four, where black people were granted the freedom to vote, but not economic freedom. So I stand clearly in support of expropriation without compensation. The government must amend section twenty-five of the constitution. We need distribution of land for residential purposes, organic and commishal farming, for self-sustainability. Black people must work land and be active participants in the economic growth. We are not free until we form part and parcel of the economic development. Yes, we agree that this process should be done in a manner that will keep harmony in this country. And we believe the government and the committee are in position for proper mechanisms and methodologies. In conclusion, um, I heard you saying that what is it that black people are going to do with the land? Um, before the arrival of drumadaris, poor the hope and rehher, black people were already farming and mining. We want land for the very same reason that you white people are holding on to. Expropriation of land without compensation will happen. We will go as far as expropriating Oraniya. Tell Boshov to be strong. We are coming. Easy late.
Next speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chairman. I'd like to stand in support of the motion saying, land without, uh, land expropriation without compensation be amended in South Africa. Gase sotoreri, yalla godo, yahu tana ha, le matagwana, ayu. Uh, allow me, Chairman, to remind this minority whites that, it is we who plow the fields. We build the cities where these people trade. It is we who dug the mines. We build those endless, endless miles well relate. However, now we stand our customs, nothing. This is the wonders that we have made for this country. But we are saying, riada, lefatsi retola kuti seta hobem balon. Ntuha ribua mona na kere we, ki, 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 kama keta ba kupu, ba tlu ba na na hori. Toho ta fulen, rebone retsa kuti sa juan lefatsi. Unali puering, share your riches with the poor before they come and share their poverty with you. So now, kama tuha hori we. Ma ta kaufela, erna lemo na monana, ba ba ngana holo ba tlu ba na. Habasa okusisi, retola mka fatselenana. It's either ka bulete, ka tipa, ka bazuka, retola mka lefatselenana, kela vuta tana, kala bo. Tell me.
Fake interpreter. The amendment of section twenty five of the constitution is supported, which will allow for land to be expropriated without compensation. It will provide an opportunity for black people to also have their chance to be farmers. And what the previous speaker addressed was the fact that what would black people do with farming? Indicated that they were farming even before the arrival of whites in the country. He said there were numerous occasions and platforms or forums that were creating, created in the past for peaceful engagement. But if those who own the land currently are reluctant, the land will be taken by force ultimately. Next speaker.
Thank you, thank you, Chairperson. And I would like to greet all members of parliament here today and members of the public. Chairperson, I'm also we know or a ball of body in heart. We have a team and I tell you say funny that he inputs. However, Chairperson, they give a card. So raise one or two issues. Land, it's for development. Land for peace, land for justice, land for dignity. My message, I'd like to send a small and a message to the South African property owners association that they should not try to hold the development of this particular country at ransom. What I have noticed in the past is that it has been difficult for black people to enter into the property market because they have been holding on to the systems that allows participation within that particular sector. It is very important, Chairperson, that we expropriate land without compensation. I believe it is long overdue and it should be done within the constitutional framework. When we speak of land, land is very sacred to our people. We have noticed in the past where even up until today, people, African people are being displaced. They have been chased away from land that they own, from places of worship. They can't have a space to worship, from places where they've even buried their loved ones. They are not allowed access to even go and visit those people that they've buried in those particular farms. And that practice cannot continue to happen. It is very important that the state play a very central role as we are seeking to advance a developmental state. We cannot have a developmental state without ownership of land within our people's hands. Come on to our Chairperson. It is a cause for justice. And we are saying to white people that they should not try and scare us and they should not try and scare themselves. Our country, our black government is unable to develop because we can't even build new cities. We can't even build new schools. Since we've inherited the apartheid government and apartheid cities, that some of them we are seeing that they are beginning to be to decline. Even the towns that we see in the free state that are heavily dependent on agriculture. There's no development there. But yet we have unions and farmers in here asking us what are we going to do with land? Where they are even unable to build agricultural economy and ensure those cities, those towns, Brantford, Belfontain, Herzog, they don't decline. We need to build new cities and therefore we need to take land.
Time is up. Next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Rasa Kenthi. Salutations to, to the leadership of the EFF here around. Mine is Hempel. I wish to speak to the whites today. No, I'm not apologetic about this.
Address, address the committee, sir.
Okay. Why continue to put us blacks here in South Africa in such a pain? Why can't you just give back the land? Why should we negotiate or have public hearings and waste money? Taxpayers' money? That could be doing something better out there to our people. Why must we negotiate? What has been taken away without our permission? Give back the land. We want the land. If you want to be compensated, the only thing that you, you should be looking for is the mirrors and the bicycles that you applied as your tactics to steal the land from our forefathers. You are not apologetic and don't test our patience.
Sir, you are talking to the committee. So please address your.
Okay. Don't test our patience. We are, we don't want to negotiate. If, if you are pushing us, we'll go and take it with or without your permission. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name is Tabelo Mguena. Chairperson, I'm so grateful to get this opportunity to talk about this burning issue. First of all, I think it's not a secret that once upon a time, there were people who said somewhere in Europe, these people, they were sitting around a dinner table and they were not happy with what was on that table. And what happened? You know, this, this is a very burning issue. It's, it's hectic, but I'm gonna try to speak. Their appetite led them to our continent. And when they arrive here, they never ask for anything. They took it by force. We can no longer allow a land to be used as a patronage against black people. I'm saying to these people who are sitting in front of us here, especially those who are wearing the red because those are the ones that I can associate with. Those are the ones that I gave the mandate. When you get to parliament, even if you, they say you must use the hands to vote and you are running short of numbers. Comrade Freud, DSG, my homeboy, raise the two hands. Raise the two hands just to show that the issue of land is not a joke. To our, to our fellow white people, we are, we are not supporting expropriation of land without compensation just because we want to hurt you. We want to correct what the sixteen fifty-two gang did. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hello, Chairperson, fellow members of the committee. My name is Johan van der Welp. I'm a farmer here in the Free State. I'd like to address the committee and start off with a question. What's the type of farmers that we need? If you look accordingly to stats SA and the World Bank, South Africa's population is urbanizing at a rate of sixty to sixty-four percent. Out of that, out of a population of fifty-four million, that means more than thirty-nine million. People under the age of forty, most of them live in cities. And that was in March twenty sixteen. What, again, what is the type of farmer that we need to provide food for such a growing population? Without farmers, you will have no doctors. You will have no teachers. You will have no attorneys because everybody will be busy providing food for him and his family and everybody else, but not for a population that has to do all the other stuff. Now, what is commercial agriculture? Generally, commercial agriculture is the opposite of subsistence farming. In commercial agriculture, the producer is farming with the intent to sell some or all of his produce. They participate in commerce. Hence the name "commercial agriculture." That is why I'm opposed to the amendment of the section twenty-five of the constitution. You cannot borrow money if you haven't got the collateral. Hence, you cannot provide for people only for yourself. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
I give away. I give away one of my parliament. I tell you, yes, we parliamenting, I tell you, fast, or not about to move on. In fact, you bought the car now, you know, I care. I give no rock. Let's give a like, get some more. Hey, there are hard way about the ball, I get the book. Yeah, but who are you? But the ball, I tell you, it's very good. More far, who wants to be serious in the past in my? Give away, you know, how many you bought, I leave you a holiday. In fact, I hold a whole lot of money, I'm a much harder one. I want to do it. Oh, buddy, you know, it's a hell of a value. It's one of the best, ha, ha, they say. I just say about a more rough one, I got more. You're born about twelve, I'm a child, I'm a woman. But I live in Bo, I'm a cop, I'm a little bit harder. Ronax, I'm a little happy, I'm a little bit of a problem, I'm a little bit of a. Maybe I'm a child, you're born, I'm a sad, you're bad, I'm a mom, you're a kid, I'm a boy, I'm a woman. I own a toy, I'm a little girl, I'm a little fast. It's easy, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a lady. Oh, buddy, but I'm a woman, I'm a woman. How can I get a camera, I get a shining camera? Because I'm a little bit of a child, I'm a child. How do you say, I'm a woman, I'm a child, I'm a man, I'm a little bit of a woman, I'm a woman. So come on, so I'm a, you could put on twelve, you're a woman. You bought a roll, you're a woman. You're a woman. You're a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I give you, you know, I'm a woman. Leave you, I'm a master. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Oh, buddy, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Come on, so I'm a, you bought a. You're a woman, you're a woman, I give you a little bit, I'm a woman. You're a woman, I'm a woman. Let's see, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Yes, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I love you, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Yes, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Who knows about the bank, I'm a woman, I'm a mother. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. But I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Oh, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Oh, my, my, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. How do you say, I'm a man? You're a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. So I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. You're a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Well, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Oh, buddy, I said that's a, I'm a woman, I'm a woman.
I love you.
How about you, you know, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Give you, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. So I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman.
Now, referee.
You're a woman.
Interpreter. The day, the day Man Tute says he supports the amendment of section twenty-five of the constitution, which will allow for land to be expropriated without compensation. He also indicated that when that time arrives that the government expropriates the land, the government must also support communities or black people with implements or agricultural implements or infrastructure that will support their work. Is a late. African Congress. I'm a woman, I'm a woman for more than sixty years. Lean. He give me a lot. Yes, I, I, I welcome you, I'm a party. My new, so I'm a woman, I'm a woman. My new ability, I send you, you know, I'm a woman. No, I'm a woman. I'm a high school. That way, I hope you know, I'm a woman. Yes, I'm a. Section, you know, who I'm a school. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. You know, I had to buy, I care, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a lady. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I shake, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I guess I'm a lady. So I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. 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 I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. In fact, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I really, I really, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a person, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, even before ninety-four. I think it's a good party. Me, I care, I'm a woman. I guess I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Really. I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I'm a woman. I'm a woman, 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 I'm a woman. Thank you, interpreter.
My name is Kabani Machedu from Ondendaswes. I would like to say, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. I support land expropriation as I've been fighting for this land for over sixty years. We want our land back. Remove section twenty-five because the land has always belonged to us. We are fighting our government. Our government needs to ensure that we get our land back. We don't just want farms, we want our land back.
Next speaker.
Greetings, greetings, the most age, Rastafarian, Selassie. On a kiss, sister Mimi, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. From here, the municipality of Machabeng, from ward twenty-five. It's one of the latest wards that are owned by youth people, like youth here in Free State. This issue of land is a very serious issue. We give thanks for our democratic parliament that leads this session of today. It shows that, yeah, we are in the real democratic world. This issue of land, I can go back, share my personal story briefly. I made my submission, I think fifteenth of June, as a youth person. I'm the business person, a young woman, thirty-four years' age. And we all know that in South Africa, most of the benefits goes to the youth. So next day, I'm turning thirty-five. I'm having my business in twenty ten. I'm having a business site that municipality can't grant me legally in paperwork, that piece of business land because of these laws and laws that were made by our slave masters, who are still trying to cry like babies today when they need to give up what they have done, the damage that they have done. So we, as the Rastafarian community, our forefathers have been taken away as a Khakari slave ship raid, trade, uh, 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 business. I got these white people when they came here. So we need to bring back our forefathers. They are Africans, those people, they didn't live here by choice. They left here because they were taken away as slaves to go and work that side of the Atlantic Ocean. So we need this land so that we can restore, rebuild and restore our dignity as Africans and prepare for them because we are claiming restoration of our legacies, repatriation, restoration and reparation. That is another subject for another day. Today, I'm saying, eh, this context, yeah, yeah, that expropriation without compensation. I support that motion firstly because it is long overdue, as everybody have said. It is not a matter of somebody crying for the toilet, I'm a woman, I'm a woman. Man and man must by this time have bidet their legacy so that they can be free and do their business and also allow us our right. These are human rights, it's not some illusions that somebody is coming up with as if we don't have skills or indigenous knowledge or innovation or any other way of developing our country, particularly here in Machabeng, where we are in the goldfields. Because they came and they claimed and they damaged physically, emotionally, even spiritually. So to address the historically justice of these possessions, to address the economic imbalance created by apartheid, as I've said, this colonial past against African majority, to seek economical readiness to advance radical transformation. Because to pursue and advance land expropriation without compensation, it will lead us to a land expropriation without compensation. It will happen within this existing constitutional framework. We are sure about it. It is not a matter of what, but it's the process that you guys are carried. The parliament must pass this law and we are supporting our leading government. I'm a man.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Val Gutter and I'm with the CPF as well as some foundations in Macharing. I'm one of those Quara Quaras you're talking about in Lachua. I've noticed that I'm white. So that's not an issue. The issue is I live here, I bought land here. Not land, I bought a house. I owe the bank, so I have to pay the bank. So in a way, I don't want to lose my house because I have invested in it. But in the same breath, as a white person, a fair and conscientious white person, you cannot deny that black people were tricked by being hospitable to foreigners. You cannot bite the hand that feeds you. There was hospitality involved. They opened their house to everybody and in the process, they got tricked, which is unfair. And I have been to the location. I have seen the buffer strip between the white side and the black side that's unused in every single town in South Africa. There is that divide of land that is unused. People, old people, disabled people have to trek from one side of the location just to go shopping in town. It's unfair, it's unheard of. And if you're a white person and you have to live with thirteen people in a two-bedroom shack in the cold, as a woman having to go outside to go to the bathroom or go fetch your water, it's not fair. And, and I know, I know that the ANC government has done its best and there were a lot of people that exploited the fact that they could sell their land at high prices, too high for the government to even pay and give it away to somebody that's deserving and black. I know that they've tried that process, but it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked, it has failed. Why? Because people are being exploitative again for the second time around, they cannot. It's almost like taking a bird out of a cage and saying, you're free, but put a brick on its back. You're free, fly. You cannot fly with a brick on your back. You've got the shackles pulling you down. So I'm for this and I know that the government wants to implement this because it's inequality, it's unjust and judgment delayed is judgment denied. People are up to here with it. I live in a nice area. We have, in our street, we have mixed people. I have black neighbors on all sides of me and I'm happy to have them. And I love them, just like I would love anybody else, whatever color. That doesn't matter to me. But what does matter is when I see women having to struggle because they've got a baby on their back, they've got a baby on their arm and they have to walk a distance in the cold or the heat or unsafe conditions just to get somewhere where you can have the liberties of buying some food. It's not fair. Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Thank you, interpretation.
My name is Mia Maschela. I support land expropriation without compensation. White people own land and they are ungrateful as, as black people, we continue to work hard for them, but they do not compensate us rightfully so. I believe, I believe that black women are. I believe, I believe that black women are the most hardworking people. We work hard. I have a garden myself. I also have cattle, but because I don't have land, my cattle is kept with somebody else. I believe, white people have the opportunity to turn their farms into generational wealth as even before a white child is born, has a farm already allocated to them. We want that for our kids. We want our kids to stop being soldiers, to come work hard and work this land with us. We want our land back.
Next speaker. Thank you, interpreter.
The day Robert Makume from Oden Dal Svest says he supports the motion for the amendment of section 25 of the constitution so as to allow for expropriation of land without compensation. He says he feels ashamed to be a black man and still not have land. Says land should be brought back to black people so as to restore their dignity.
Thank you, members of the public. I'm allowing break till 2 o'clock. It's a comfort break for the table, till 2 o'clock.